Me agradezco mucho a la biblioteca, ustedes que tuvieron la gentileza de traernos. Esto es un bien para uno, un bienestar para nosotros. Les agradezco muchísimo en...
Okay, everybody. Good evening. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 session of the Half Moon Bay City Council. We will begin with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Here.
Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everybody. Like I move that way, approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those against? Motion approved. Thank you. We're going to begin with proclamations and presentations. And we're going to start with a presentation from the Midcoast Community Council update. Thank you, Scott, for being here this evening.
Thank you. Greetings from the Midcoast Community Council. I'm Scott. I'm always happy to have you over. I also like to say congratulations to the community for an awesome pumpkin festival.
How's it now? Cool. All right. I just want to say congratulations to the community for an awesome pumpkin festival. My family always looks forward to it, and it was great. I'd like to start off with a few things from El Granada. There previously, there were the plans for Cypress Point Low-Income Housing Project were put on hold by the fire department. That was probably due to access issues for fire engines over there in El Granada. Those plans are now moving forward. The second point I want to make in El Granada is, coincidentally, there are plans to have no parking on Carlos Street. Now, this is going to be quite a convenience, an inconvenience for the people on Carlos Street. And I just have to say, hmm, to both of those happening at the same time. I also want to let you know, at our upcoming meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Granada Community Service District, which is at 504 Avenue Alhambra on the third floor, that's kind of a shameless plug for my next meeting, we're going to be discussing the plans to rezone multiple parcels in some areas of the county to allow high-density multifamily development. This is due to the housing element that San Mateo County is responsible for to the state. A small portion of El Granada is going to be affected by this attempt to rezone. So at our next meeting, we're going to be discussing that. My last update for you is another item on our agenda for our next meeting is going to be an update from the San Mateo County Planning and Building Committee on the current standing of the county lighting standards. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council? Nope, no questions. Thanks so much.
Right on. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Next up, we have a library annual report and a proclamation. We'll start with the annual report.
Good evening, Mayor Brownstone, city council members and city staff. I am Annie Malli, and I'm the outgoing library manager. And I am so happy to introduce you to Julie Smith, our incoming library manager.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm pleased to share the library's annual report for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
Waiting for the slides to come up? Is that right?
Yes.
I figured.
Okay. First established as a county-free library in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Our service area is 351 square miles made up of our 11-member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. Each of our 13 libraries is part of a larger system offering countless opportunities for connection and exploration. We curate our offerings to meet the needs and interests of our community to help them thrive. This year, we rolled out our new five-year strategic plan. Our new plan grounds us in our shared goals to listen, connect, discover, and engage. As we put our new vision, mission, and goals into action, we know our continued success depends on the insights, contributions, and voices of the communities we serve. As part of our strategic plan, we introduced a new vision and mission to guide our work. Our updated mission: Together, we build meaningful connections and inspire lifelong curiosity. Now, I'd like to share how that's coming to life at our libraries. The programs and collections at San Mateo County libraries are well-used. This year, we saw 1.7 million library visitors, 2.4 million items circulated, and over 11,600 programs and events. Beyond numbers, each data point represents the connections, learning, and growth that happens across our community. We strive to deliver services and offer opportunities where our diverse communities feel seen, heard, and valued. Each of our staff brings unique backgrounds and experiences to the library. This diversity strengthens how we serve through responsive programs, meaningful outreach, and culturally rich collections. Our culture of discovery and exploration is reflected in our 249,967 active cardholders. We saw 2.8 million website visits, 41,984 laptop checkouts, 4 million in-library Wi-Fi sessions, and, a huge increase here, 23,343 hotspot checkouts thanks to additional hotspots added to our collection. And we were proud to welcome 14,274 new cardholders this year. At the local level...
At the local level.
Very local. 192,617 people visited the library. 217,522 items were circulated. 70 volunteers contributed over 2,400 hours supporting our community. Also at the local level, we saw almost 80,000 digital downloads this past year. Our program attendance at our 1,167 programs reached over 22,282 people. Next slide. We create moments for every stage and phase of life to foster growth and curiosity. I'm excited to share some of our greatest accomplishments from last year. Our 55-plus programs continue to grow, connecting older adults with opportunities to stay active, learn new skills, and build friendships. We create welcoming spaces and provide meaningful experiences where we help older adults find connection, routine, and a sense of belonging. Here's a short video highlighting one of our...
Me agradezco mucho a la biblioteca, ustedes que tuvieron la gentileza de traernos. Esto es un bien para uno, un bienestar para nosotros. Les agradezco muchísimo en mi nombre y creo que en el nombre de todos.
We're helping families spark a love of reading from day one. Through Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, children ages zero to five receive free books in the mail each month. Since launch, thousands of San Mateo County kids have enrolled in this program. We're thankful to our partners at the Dollywood Foundation, the Foundation for San Mateo County Libraries, and our friend groups who make these offerings possible. Together with our partners, we bring the library into the community in fun and unexpected ways. At Library Night with the San Francisco Giants, thousands of fans explored our Makromobile, browsed eBooks, and took home baseball-themed books. At the San Mateo County Fair, we created a vibrant reading garden where visitors of all ages enjoyed books and activities. Wherever we go, we remind people the library is within reach. Our staff are at the heart of everything we do. This year, our library champions leaned into growth and new ideas, turning creativity into even better services for our communities. We celebrate our team, from longtime staff members who know our communities deeply to new team members who bring fresh perspectives. And we're thankful for the support of volunteers and friend groups who continuously help us reach even more people across the county. Our libraries are, of course, community destinations. We provide welcoming spaces to gather, learn, and connect. Through continued upgrades and new spaces, we're always working to make them more comfortable, innovative, and inspiring for everyone in collaboration with you. Our Half Moon Bay library celebrated its own wins and progress this year. We would like to highlight our outreach to the community. We love our beautiful library, and our service area is 240 square miles. So it is important for us to go out in the community and meet our residents where they are. During the year, we made over 300 visits out in the community and connected with over 10,000 residents. We celebrated community events like the Summers End Music Festival, Pascadero Art and Fun Festival, Half Moon Bay Pride, Make It Main Street, and National Night Out. We visited local food distributions and community meal sites every month. We visited many local school events like Art and Science Day and Bike Row Deals. And we provided storytimes at local preschools. I'd like to highlight our after-school meals program. Through the generosity of the friends of the Half Moon Bay library, we distributed 9,784 meals to the community. Our work around ensuring that our residents have what they need to thrive continues to be a priority. Thank you to city staff and the council for your collaboration with us and for championing the library. In particular, councilmember Deborah Penrose and city manager Matthew Chidester for your work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you to friends of the Half Moon Bay library for their ongoing support, advocacy, and celebration of library offerings. And to the library staff for their committed and passionate work. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much. And I know we probably have a few comments from councilmembers.
I want to personally thank, I think, Annie, you were part of that one time. My daughter's disabled, and we have a networking of disabled kids, but we don't know them all, and they funneled into an art project. Annie, you could probably elaborate a little bit more on that one. And I was invited. My wife told me you should come, so I went. And they went last weekend. If I'm not mistaken, I heard you retiring. And I'm sad to hear it, but I'm also happy for you. It's a beautiful environment because you're doing art pieces. There's a lot of kids from the Big Wave that are there, and there's networking going on. So my wife met Lisa, I think you met her too. And her daughter was deaf, and she can communicate. I guess I didn't hear all the thing, but she goes to Skyline College. She does, you know, she's active. And so now my wife's got this new friend, was over for pumpkin festival. My daughter's got a new friend. So this networking that's happening here at the library is just awesome. And I just want to say thank you because it really has changed our lives.
So thank you. That's the All Abilities Club. It's the second Friday of the month. We've been doing it, I think, for almost 10 years now. It took a little bit of hiatus during the pandemic. The Friends of the Library pay for a meal, so it's an opportunity for people of all abilities to come together and enjoy a meal and do crafts. We love having Ella come to do that.
Thank you for the presentation. It's great to see the numbers. Even though I saw them in reverse, I can just see them. There's some great numbers on who's connected to the library, who uses the library. I know my son used it all through his school when he was here in Half Moon Bay. And I know it wasn't easy to get this library in its current location, in its current state, but as I can see, a library is much more than a library. And it's not just the books. It's all you that make it work. We've acknowledged staff and, you know, councilmembers that are a part of this too. But, you know, I thank you, and I want to thank your continued work to keep, you know, keep us, reminding us we're more than just books over there.
Yeah. I'd like to talk a little bit about how much fun it's been to be on the board of the library. It's an 8:15 in the morning on a Monday morning meeting. And I actually look forward to it. It's my favorite meeting. I'm thinking back about, I don't know whether it was two or three years ago, when we had a budget overage. We had some extra money. And we were talking among ourselves and with the staff about, what do you do with this extra money? Where do you think it ought to go? Where should we put it? And I made the suggestion that we increase the number of hotspots and laptops that are available for rental by our citizens. And lo and behold, the very next year, we had, I don't know whether we doubled it, but we got many, many more hotspots and laptops. And I guess my only question right now is, are we using all the hotspots and laptops that we currently have available? And if so, let's get some more.
So they are a very hot-ticket item at the library. And as soon as they come in, they get refreshed, and they go out automatically. And I believe in the budget, there are plans for more, so...
Great.
Yeah, they are an amazing gift to the community.
It's a wonderful thing. And I love the after-school food program that you have. And I think, you know, you really are the community. You are where people go to be communal. And when we have bad things that happen, tsunami warnings, that kind of thing, the mass shooting, people run to the library. When the internet is out, people go to the library. You are a central hub in our community, and I am very grateful that you're there. And Annie, you have made it all just a very, very special, special place for all of us. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations on your retirement. We'll miss you very much. You've done wonderful things for our community. And welcome to our new manager. I hope all goes well for you. You have an auspicious beginning. And I just want to say thank you for all you do at the library and for our community. You're really now, you know, a beacon of freedom in this country, our libraries. Very important, increasingly important. And we need to help you and protect what you do and stand by you. And our community, I know, will do that because it's such an asset. So just thanks for all you do, and keep on keeping on.
Thanks to both of you, and I can say with great confidence that the library is probably the most beloved institution in Half Moon Bay. Everybody loves the library and the resources that it provides, and visitors come in and love the library, so it's really great in terms of, it's a beautiful building, beautiful resources, really wonderful services, so thanks to you both. And in honor of you entering a new phase of your life, Annie, we have a proclamation here for you. And I would love to read this proclamation. Whereas Annie Malley, Half Moon Bay Library Manager, is retiring after 20 years of service with San Mateo County Libraries. And whereas Annie started her career with San Mateo County Libraries in 2005 as the Assistant Branch Manager at the San Carlos and Brisbane Libraries before promoting to Library Manager of Half Moon Bay in 2007. And whereas, once Annie settled in Half Moon Bay, her passion for community engagement, outreach, and partnerships flourished. From collaborating with parents and school leaders to public strong, to building strong relationships with local businesses, nonprofits, civic leaders, and elected officials, Annie has a remarkable talent for bringing people together and is deeply valued by the community. Her genuine commitment to inclusion and understanding of the coast side's diverse communities has earned her deep respect and admiration. And whereas a true highlight of Annie's tenure was her work in building community support for a new Half Moon Bay library. Her dedication to informing and engaging the community was an important part of the project's success. Her contributions were invaluable to the project team and helped ensure the library opened its doors in 2018 as a meaningful reflection of the community's dreams and needs. And whereas Annie and her team have been a steadfast presence in the community, her responsive, partnership-driven approach has built a remarkable level of trust and service beyond the library walls. It's rare to find a nonprofit or community organization along the coast that hasn't partnered with Annie or been inspired by her collaborative spirit. Under her leadership, the Half Moon Bay Library has become a vibrant hub of innovation, volunteerism, and community connection. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert Brownstone, along with my fellow council members of the city of Half Moon Bay, do hereby honor and recognize Annie Malley for her 18 years of committed service to the coast side, and share our gratitude, great appreciation, and best wishes on her well-deserved retirement as she embarks on the next stage of her life. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, apologies there, everyone. We're going to take a brief recess. Appears that Zoom is also having some technical difficulties, so we'll be back with you as soon as possible. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, thanks for your patience, everyone. We're going to resume. We are still, my understanding is, everybody who is watching from home can see us. But unfortunately, our Zoom is not working in terms of participants who are remote this evening to be able to participate. So unfortunately, when we have public forum and public comments on agendized items today, we will only be able to hear from folks who are here in person. So apologies, doesn't happen often, but thanks for bearing with us. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, let's see, Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. Coming up on November 7th is, we will have our very first Diwali celebration, and that'll be happening in the evening. I believe it's in the evening, I'm not sure what the time is unless we have, do we have a time?
They're still finalizing the details for that, but it will be that evening.
We're still finalizing that, and thanks to Evelyn De Souza and Joe Koczet for being able to make that happen this year. So looking forward to that on November 7th. And then as we get closer in November, plenty of events as we get closer to the holidays. So it's that time of year, everybody. City manager updates to council, just a few, I think.
We skipped over a report out from closed session, but there is nothing to report out this evening.
There's no report outs, thank you. Okay. We'll have our city managers update council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, one short update, just a follow-up to Pumpkin Festival. We had Pumpkin Festival this past weekend, it went very, very well. Congratulations to the community, to the nonprofits, who I hope have raised a lot of funds to run their programs this year, and to the beautification committee who puts this on and does such a great job. You know, the weather was, there wasn't a cloud in the sky on Saturday, it was unbelievable, beautiful weather. Sunday was a little cooler, a little cloudier in the morning, and then it burned off and it was another nice day. We'll actually have data on what the crowds were like, probably within the next week or two. And the anecdotal feedback from, from everybody was a really successful weekend, no major incidents, no major challenges. And I think the coordination that goes on between the city, the beautification committee, the fire district, sheriff's office, and others is just really, really honed in, and that leads to, you know, there was traffic, but it was manageable, and I think it was just a really, really positive weekend. So thanks to the beautification committee for the work that they do to bring that to the community, thanks to the county for working with them on a couple of different areas to make sure it's financially sustainable, and thanks for the community for, for, you know, dealing with what is kind of an inconvenient weekend, but is, is really important for the economy here and for our nonprofits. So, thank you.
Agreed, thanks all. Thanks all around to everybody, thanks for the great public safety support from the sheriff's department, and always a special shout-out to Cameron Palmer, who has to pull quite a few things together to make the Pumpkin Festival happen each year, and, and always a great master of ceremonies at the weigh-in as well. We are on to public forum, and as I mentioned, we will just be focusing on some folks here in the room. So I think you all know the rules here for public forum, everybody has three minutes. You'll get a tone at the end of two and a half minutes, meaning you have 30 seconds left, I'll remind you at that point, and then you have a second tone, which means your three minutes are up. We're going to start with Deborah, council member Deborah Penrose.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Half Moon Bay. I'm speaking out as an elected official and as an angry and frightened human being. Donald Trump, left unchecked, is destroying everything that we hold dear in these United States. He has already shown unequivocally that he has no respect for the rule of law, that he is willing to jail the folks that you vote into office, that he will never allow a question to be asked from a public official that may have the potential to put to question his agenda. And what will the consequences of your disobedience be? He will federalize the National Guard, usurping the power of your elected governor. He will call in the armed forces. He is saying, "Be quiet, shut up, or if you defy me, I will come after you, hunt you down, and make you pay." I know that my tone of voice and some of the words that I'm using tonight may seem extreme, but we do not have the luxury of mincing our words and pussyfooting around. This is no longer a contest between Democrats and Republicans. It is not a struggle between progressives and conservatives. What we have now is a battle between what is lawful and what is criminal, between what is sane and what is crazy, between what is good and what is evil. When democracy dies, be careful which side you are on. If it's the wrong side, you and your children, and your parents, and your neighbors, will lose your power, lose your right to choose, lose your right to speak out, and be in dire peril of losing your freedom and your life. If you are an elected official, speak up now. It's the time to protest. It's critical that every elected official who swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and of California show that they are willing to defend them. If you live in the United States of America, please speak up. All of our voices need to be heard. Please protest against what you feel is wrong or dangerous. Do not allow evil to triumph because you were afraid to speak.
Thank you, Deborah. Our next speaker to be is Joaquin Jimenez, and he'll, oops, there go the beeps, we're gonna start again. We'll start with Joaquin Jimenez, and he'll be followed by Crystalin Geet.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, members of the public. My name is Joaquin Jimenez, and I want to share with you my experience on the Pumpkin Festival. I think it's one for the books. The fact that, you know, I saw, you know, Saturday, I was there both days, Saturday and Sunday, had a great time, you know, on Saturday, Sunday as well. A few things, during the promotional video, you know, they show, they showed us, you know, riding our horses during the parade, during the Pumpkin Festival parade. While I was watching the parade, I heard many comments from the people, you know, "Where are the horses? We don't see the horses. They usually have music, you know, where are the horses?" Unfortunately, we could not bring horses into the parade. I know a lot of people were expecting to see the horses, they always say, "Big show." So expect to see horses, Fourth of July Parade, Vaquero Days, some other time. Another comment is, you know, I had a, I got a call from one of the vendors, you know, one of the small vendors, you know, in Half Moon Bay, he sells fresh fruit, you know, out of his cart. His car was taken away, and he got cited $200. This is a person that has a day job, and was trying to make some extra money, you know, selling fruit, you know, during the Pumpkin Festival, and his car was taken, and he had to pay $200. I know there was a resident in Half Moon Bay, I kept a mouth shut by what he was doing, he was going around, you know, pointing out to the chairs where we had small vendors, you know, people are trying to, you know, how to make extra money so they can pay the bills. You know, I saw that very disturbing. You know, maybe we can inform the vendors, you know, for the future Pumpkin Festival, about how they can get a permit, you know, to be able to make extra money. The life, living in Half Moon Bay is not cheap at all, you know, and the fact that this person has to pay $200 to the city of Half Moon Bay, you know, for selling fruit, I don't think he made that much money, you know, selling fruit, but he still had to, he still had to pay for that. I also had the opportunity to speak with a lot of the vendors, you know, during the Pumpkin Festival. I mentioned to them about the festival, the event that we do in August, you know, Vaquero Days.
30 seconds.
I, I mentioned to them that we have an, you know, an event that is happening, you know, already happened two years in a row. I got that information to invite them to come over to Half Moon Bay, you know, in August for Vaquero Days. Many of them were very excited, you know, somewhere in the, from the area, somewhere local, some from the East Bay, and other ones from LA, and said, "We'll come over, we love horses." You know, so they are looking forward to being here for Vaquero Days. But on top of that, you know, Pumpkin Festival, one for the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Next speaker is Crystalin Geet, followed by Julissa Acosta.
Thank you so much, Crystalin, Co-See Chamber. Two items, the first item, I would also like to send out a big thank you to Pumpkin Festival and to Cameron, and for us in particular, we also want to thank Joe Koczet and Half Moon Bay Winery, thank you to their huge generous donation. We were able to sell 505 bottles of red wine and 236 bottles, oh, sorry, that's backwards, it was a hot day, 505 bottles of white wine and 236 bottles of red wine. So that is the biggest fundraiser of the year for the Chamber, so we thank them very much, and the city for allowing the festival to take place, and the beautification for making it happen. Thank you, everybody. I would also like to just let everybody know that nights of lights will be happening, because for us, the second that Pumpkin Fest is over, we gotta thank Christmas. So we will have the annual city tree lighting on the day after Thanksgiving, November 28th, followed by the next Friday will be the big parade and block party and all the fun stuff, followed by the ugly sweater party, where we are gonna start down the road trying to beat the world record, which is only a little over 2,500 ugly sweaters. And lastly, followed up by the community showing of elf and spaghetti feet. So please join us on the four Fridays, starting with the city's tree lighting on November 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystalin. Our next speaker is Julissa Acosta, and followed by Nancy Fontana.
Good evening, Mayor, Julissa Acosta, speaking as a member of the public today, not as a city staff. I'm joined here by my colleague, Lysandra Goddard. We're both belong to the Commission on the Status of Women for San Mateo County, and would like to make an invitation to the, to the council, city staff, and community. We're hosting a listen and learn session for District 3 here at the library next Tuesday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Anybody's welcome. The focus of our work over the last couple of years has been access to childcare and financial education and health, and we're hoping to spread the work of the work, we're, spread the work on the work we're doing, and also hear what other challenges the community's facing. Thank you.
Thank you both, thank you, Julissa. Our final speaker is Nancy Fontana.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I wasn't gonna speak during this public forum, but Mr. Jimenez's comments, I just wanted to provide some information, I have a feeling the council knows. The horses are really a nice thing to witness, and it's very enjoyable for the public, but there are problems related to insurance and liability for the city, and I believe that's a big reason that horses are, that, that they're being excluded from the parades. There was an incident a number of years ago in the Midwest where, I think it was Clydesdales, which are usually considered kind of calm horses, something caused them to run loose through the crowd. And with the crowds at the Pumpkin Festival, there would be no place for anybody to go. So I don't know if the city has, through their insurance, where they can facilitate special events coverage, and if people want to form a group of horse people and apply for that insurance so that they take on that liability, then maybe horses could be allowed. That's, that's all I wanted to suggest, thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public forum. Public forum is now closed. We move on to our consent calendar. We're gonna take this one a little slow, because some people have to abstain, because they can't vote on things that they weren't party to. So we're gonna just go through a little bit slow. So, first item, A to A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances, that one's okay. So I'll move that way. Wave readings of resolutions and ordinances, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, that one's approved. We now have two items, 8B and 8C. Councilmember Negan Gast will abstain.
Eight F? Great. Okay, why don't we, um, do eight G first, then we'll go back and come back. Um, I move that we adopt item eight G, adopting a resolution consenting to the dissolution of the San Mateo County Cities Insurance Group Joint Powers Authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against. Motion approved. Item eight F.
Thank you. That's, that's the warrants again, and I have just two that I want to ask about. Um, on the, there's a ARG Conservation Services. They're talking about the Main Street Bridge facade inspection, ropes, access, survey, project coordination. Um, is it, what, is that an inspection report for, for the Main Street Bridge? Do you know what exactly? And, and then when's this proj, then to tie it in, does that mean this project is coming forward real soon?
Yes. Um, I believe this is our, um, our historical consultant because of the status of the bridge. Um, as, as the council remembers, we approved this almost a year ago, um, or maybe eight or nine months ago to move forward with the project to replace all the planks on the decking for people to walk across the Main Street Bridge and then repair some of the handrails and some of that and then restuck and repaint the bridge. So it kinda brings it back to life. And unfortunately, as we started moving through the process of actually acquiring the materials and, and moving forward with the project, um, it was determined that it really needed an evaluation by a historic architect. That's what this person was. They've gone through the process. We're good to go. Um, we are doing a CDP exemption before we move forward with the project, just to make sure we've covered all of our bases. And, um, is Todd still here? Do we have a sense of when we'll start that work?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Todd Seeley, Public Works Superintendent in term, Public Works Director. If everything goes as planned, hopefully we can start construction as early as February. That's the tentative plan that we have right now. Um, the wood has already been acquired and it's just sitting in our corporation yard, so that we'd like to get to it sooner rather than later. Um, we were actually discussing today about the path forward as one vendor versus two, doing the two distinct pieces of the work, the woodwork and the stucco work, but we do have a plan moving forward and we're hopeful that we can get construction going as, as early as February.
Thank you. Yes, it's the first reinforced concrete bridge in San Mateo County. Yes.
Correct, yes.
And then, uh, the other item is right, the one right below it, Baird Driscoll Abrams Community Planning about, there, there's an item on tonight's agenda with that same firm? Is this tied to it or is this something different?
I'm gonna ask Leslie, um, are you familiar with this? There's, uh, Baird Driscoll Abrams Community Planning. Um, we paid them last month a fee. Is this rel, I, I don't believe it's related to the, the item tonight. I think this is separate consultant work.
Right.
Are you familiar with this one?
Yeah, the item tonight's Tennessee, the, uh, the multi-jurisdictional inclusionary housing study. That's another i, separate item. I didn't know if this was same thing or something different.
That's, is this on?
It's on.
Okay. That's for the, um, SEQA analysis for the housing element. So for the last month, we've been circulating that. Um, when we finally reached a point where we agreed with HCD on some housing element stuff, when I went back to look at the SEQA document, it was then out of date. So we had to update it and then circulate it.
So that's Half Moon Bay's housing element?
Yes, it is.
Yep, thank you.
Separate from the item later tonight, which just happens to be the same consultant.
Oh, um, yes, that is correct. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Paul. Um, I move that we, um, accept the warrants, the warrants list for the month of September 2025, item eight F.
Second.
All those in favors?
Aye.
All those against. Motion passed. Great, thank you, everybody. Uh, we'll now move on to resolu, no ordinances in public hearings this evening. We'll move on to resolutions and staff reports. And our first item is item 10A. A, we will have a brief presentation on the fiscal year 2024 annual report on law enforcement services and activities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice and councilmembers. Sorry. Okay, that's better. My apologies.
Thank you.
So thank you for making time to hear the report. Appreciate it. So the first thing is I'll address the elephant in the room. Obviously, the office of sheriff is now vacant. Uh, I want to assure you that there is a continuity of operations. As of now, the undersheriff is discharging the duties of the sheriff. And if anything should happen, so you know there is a plan after him, it goes to the assistant sheriff, then on to the ranking captain and so on and so forth. There is not a break in leadership. And while there may be some administrative slowdowns simply because of the exec, the absence of the executive level, that the service to the citizens on a daily basis will not be affected. The sheriff's office is composed of three divisions, corrections, patrol and services. The city of Half Moon Bay falls under patrol. Now, in this, I include the entire coast side. So the sheriff's office assigns two deputies for the unincorporated area north of the city, two south of the city and two in the city, and they share a supervisor. I included them because there's so much interaction. While the city only pays for two deputies, the fact of the matter is everybody comes to here just because Half Moon Bay is central and it is a bit of a hub. Our four teams, and you may have noticed, my apologies, the two night teams also have a additional unit that's assigned to Skyline. It's usually of the canine officer, uh, and he actually works, he or she, from noon to midnight, which allows them to offer more services where the dog is useful. And as you can see, uh, it's, it's a diverse team. My apologies. Uh, and we are, as of right now, we try to make it the case, ensure we have a minimum of one bilingual Spanish speaker on each team. So we always have that access. And one of the things I noted before and I'll mention again very quickly is in fiscal year 21, 22, we made the conversion from the UCR to Nibers reporting. So fiscal year 22, 23 was the first year that we had a complete data under Nibers. Uh, unfortunately, that was also affected by COVID. So as we go through the numbers, you will see, they may look a little odd, uh, especially because some of the things that we saw under COVID are a little counterintuitive. We saw less domestic violence cases reported, not what anybody expected. We saw more collisions, more severe collisions, uh, again, not what anybody expected. A rise in property crimes, which was expected. Uh, and I believe crimes against persons actually went up a little bit, but we'll get to that as we go into it. I did want to mention that. Okay, uh, our response times actually went down a touch from three minutes and 50 seconds to three forty-six, if I remember correctly. One of the things that we found in this one, uh, we are still working on it, is cleaning the data. We found that a lot of calls were actually incorrectly coded. For instance, uh, one of the ones I found had a man smoking in the park was coded as an emergency call, which it's not. Uh, there was one where it was somebody by the Oak Street Bridge, not an emergency call. So those, we're still in the process of going through correcting that. The number of reports, uh, went down very slightly, uh, 1,019 from last fiscal year to 1,000 in this fiscal year. Not a huge difference. Violent crime reported. One of the things on this, and I'll, I'll address it if you haven't seen it already, is there was a huge dip in aggravated assaults. Aggravated assaults are defined as assaults that result in great bodily injury or involve the use of a weapon. I referred this to our crime analysts. They dove into it. They called their friends. They don't see any rhyme or reason why that dip is there. So we'll just have to monitor that and see if it's a trend or something we need to be more careful of going forward. In terms of violent crime arrests, uh, those were also up 11%, excuse me, those were up 11%. Uh, but you'll notice again, it pretty much follows the same trend lines as the crimes themselves. Property crime, uh, reported property crime, down just a little bit, uh, down to 89, excuse Yeah. Up 90 from 89. My mistake. So again, very minor amount, very steady. The arrests, now this is something that is a, again, something you'll see in a lot of these is a small sample size, a little bit of, uh, statistical instability. Uh, so property crimes arrests were actually up 35%, which sounds like a lot until you dig into it and find it's only a difference of actually about five arrests. So small sample size, small differences make look big. Some of the investigations that were of note, uh, in last fiscal year was, there was a case in August of 24 of a 16-year-old who was basically groomed online, began to exchange explicit images. Uh, the man on the other end became more demanding. It was eventually referred to ICAC, the Internet Crimes Against Children, and they located the suspect in Escondido and they took over the investigation. March of 25, there was a series of felony vandalisms at the Johnson House, excuse me, at the Johnson House, um, Wavecrest and Pescadero, vandalized with blue graffiti, displayed gang signs and symbols. Sorry. Uh, the primary suspect was identified as a probationer and was followed up by the detectives and is currently being prosecuted by the district attorney's office. And in September and October of the last fiscal, or fiscal year, a series of auto burglaries occurred at Cowell Beach Ranch Parking Lot. Uh, and again, this is a common theme that we're seeing, especially with the advent of the LPRs, that we're able to solve a lot of the vehicle burglaries and tie them together. Which leads me into equipment and a little bit out of order. I'll come back to the LPRs in a second, but we'll start with some of the equipment that we currently have and are working on. So right now, uh, we have gone to the Axon Body Four cameras and Fleet Three cameras. These have some expanded capabilities that we're already using, such as GPS positioning and transcription services for the videos. We're also piloting some of the other services that they offer, which include live feeds that we have actually used once to great effect in a cold case murder out of San Carlos. Um, and the body cams, one of the things that we're getting ready to try is evidently they have a live translation via the body cam that can be accessed. So that could be a huge bonus. Instead of having to wait for somebody to translate, you can actually pull up a real translator who can see through the camera, see what's going on and translate for you. We have gotten the Star Chase. So what the Star Chase system is, is it's a way that we can avoid pursuits and safely apprehend people later. Effectively, what happens is if there is a pursuit that you see in the left-hand photograph, that's what the launcher looks like on the front of the car. It launches the tracker, which you see in the right-hand photograph, which basically has a glob of glue that sticks to the back of the car. They could then track it remotely, which hopefully the person, once he realizes that the law enforcement's all behind them, they slow down and we simply vector into where they stop. So that one, uh, we have the equipment set up. We are just waiting on the fi, final policy approval before we can start using it. And as, this may sound a little silly to say iPhones because I'm guessing statistically about 50% of this room has one, but one of the things that we are piloting and other agencies have gone to with great success is actually using as a law enforcement tool, both so that we can access the call that we're on, which includes information, whether it be who's calling us, contact numbers, suspect descriptions, uh, but also being able to access our local records and state records. So for instance, we could contact somebody that gives us a fake name. We can go through local records, pull up their real name, pull up the photo, or access DMV records and pull up a driver's license photo, compare it to see if that is or isn't the correct person. Um, and speaking as somebody who's had a couple, two people that I've dealt with who had had a warrant issued out against them because somebody used their name, that's huge. So that's another big thing that we're looking at. Uh, but one of the things, like I said, that makes this so unusual is it has to meet state se, uh, security requirements to make sure that the data doesn't get leaked, to keep it private as is appropriate. So some of the ALPR success stories for this year are in November of 24, there was a residence burglary in which numerous, excuse me, numerous items, including a tractor, were stolen. The owner of the residence had recently passed away. Property was vacant at the time. Patrol got on scene, used LPR on the coast and located the suspect. September of 24, LPR cameras alerted deputies to a possible stolen vehicle. Once they confirmed it was still outstanding, a standard practice, they stopped the vehicle, contacted three occupants, uh, who were found to be in possession of a BB gun that had been modified to look like a firearm, methamphetamine, financial instruments, as well as heroin and associated paraphernalia. Three subjects were booked, arrested and booked into jail. In May of 25, ALPR cameras alerted deputies to a vehicle that had been involved in a burglary at the Caltrans yard. The vehicle was located, the driver was identified. Um, luckily, the driver was identified because it was a really bizarre case. They ended up IDing him. They worked with CHP. Uh, it turned out in the end, there wasn't anything taken, but it was important to notice that they, they caught the person and they identified the problem and identified him for any possible future threats. Okay, moving on to traffic and traffic safety. Uh, these are showing the last three years of collision data for downtown locations from left to right. It's, excuse me, wrong slide. This is the overlay, which actually shows, once you see it mapped out, you can see where the collisions are. There is a good deal on downtown, uh, on Main Street, which is to be expected. More so Kelly at one and Main and 92, which I don't think anybody's exactly shocked by. Now, we address this, we have the three E's of traffic safety. Education, engineering and enforcement. This is pretty standard. I'm sure you've heard it before, but we'll just touch on it very quickly. Education, this is something we do in community events. Our school resource officers work with young drivers, casual contacts, uh, town halls. If anybody ever wants to talk about traffic safety, having been about 10 years on the motor and being a certified reconstructionist, I am more than happy to have an at-length discussion. Uh, one of the things that the sheriff enacted, you may remember, is young driver training. That's a program that's still going. We have had the two classes at 30 teens in the two meetings. Uh, the nice thing about that is they get the real contact with our instructors. They get feedback and they get training on how to avoid collisions and good safe driving. In terms of engineering, this is largely data collected through collision reports, which is a great tool. Um, I won't go into it because obviously this is not the forum, but the changes that have been made in our roadways thanks to collision reports is staggering. Again, I'm more than happy to talk about that at length at another time. Uh, citations, those are actually tracked and identify problem areas, and officer observations. It's not uncommon for officers to see something, call it in and refer it to engineering to be repaired. Uh, also, here are some of the, the collisions. We talk about engineering that we've been tracking. Now with this, you'll see, uh, traffic collisions have gone down, but again, it's not a huge amount and it's not what I would really, I wouldn't get overly happy about it. I mean, it's a good thing. We're heading the right direction, but it's not a huge number. Uh, it's, and in fact, the fiscal year 22, 23 actually gives it a little more emphasis than I think is appropriate. So I'm just pointing that out. One of the things that it's important to point out, too, is that not all cities in Half Moon Bay are city roadways. Highway one and 92 are the purview of Caltrans. We have no control over those in the sense of repairs, engineering and such. So I wanted to just briefly mention to the public, and this will be included, uh, later, is that for anything having to do with Highway one, Highway 92, which includes the traffic signals thereon, best to reach directly out to Caltrans. If we get calls, obviously, we will address it. We will check on it. Uh, but in terms of starting an actual service request, they can reach out to Caltrans, uh, at their phone number, 916-286-4444. Option six, option two. Option six, option two. And citations are also up. Now, one of the things I will point out in this, when you look at citations, you'll see that overall citations are up. But if you look a little more carefully, you'll see that parking citations are up and moving citations are slightly down. Now with this one, again, this is a trend we're gonna have to watch. One of the things that may have affected this is the influx of new deputies. We do have three FTOs, field training officers, that train new deputies here on the coast. Traffic is one of those things that does take some time, it takes them getting used to. So whereas an experienced deputy, I could tell you on the motor, I would write probably about an average of twenty tickets a shift. Average deputy, a couple tickets a shift, depending. But when you're in training, you might get one, you might get none, because you're focused on the process, you're still learning. One of the things that has gone up, and this is actually something that's probably what it looks like, is our DUI arrests have gone up. This is more due to, we actually have on night shift here on the coast assigned to Half Moon Bay. He's one, he's actually got the most DUI arrests in the county for like three years. He's received the MAD award for I think thirteen years now. And he's a supervisor and he's training his team to look for drunk drivers. I don't think it's an indication of a greater problem, I think it's an indication of more proactive policing, making the road safer. Moving on to some of the other community events, there's a list. We work with the Sheriff's Activity League, the Community Engagement Unit in a number of ways, including some of the bigger ones are the Giants, which I'm sure everybody here has been to the games, it's awesome, a lot of fun. They've done the backpack handouts, just a number of things that they use to engage the community. Which kind of leads me into, as you're well aware, that the CARES team is now defunct. So the county has gone with a new team called the Mobile Crisis Response Team. It's actually a program with telehealth. So it is twenty-four, seven coverage, however, they're not based on the coast. The upside, again, there's a number of balancing things, some good, some bad. The bad, they're not on the coast. The bad, they only have, last time I spoke to them, one car. The bad, they're still getting up to speed, it's still a new program. The good is they, I think they had one of the teams still, they're still working on filling the spot, but they have at least one Spanish speaker on each team. The good is it's Medi-Cal compliant. So if somebody can't pay, then the bill just goes to the state as part of Medi-Cal. The good is that they're licensed and qualified counselors. So we're still seeing this, how it's gonna play out, we're still evaluating, like I said, it's a new program. And if anybody does need to reach out to them, either for themselves or for others, the number up on the screen, six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero. And this doesn't have to be just for anybody who's listening that may be going through things, this doesn't have to be, I'm standing on a cliff, I've made some decision. Stop it before then. If you feel that you need help, this is what this team is there for. Give a call. In fact, they said, if I remember correctly, over sixty percent were non-critical, helping people before it got to the point of possibly seriously bad things happening. And I apologize for that, I should have forwarded the slide before I gave the phone number. As you may remember, we also have the psychiatric emergency response team with the sheriff's office, where we pair up a clinician with a deputy. They go out to a number of services, they do outreach, both for people that are referred to them, for the unhoused, they help with some of the accounting things. One of the things that I did think was interesting, and I'm not sure how this is gonna play out in years to come, but it is something that's definitely on the radar, is the number of calls from Half Moon Bay is down. For the suicidal person, last year was twenty-five, or see, the year before was twenty-five, last, this year, this reporting period was thirteen. It's a huge drop. The non-critical went from thirty-six to twenty-eight. And the family referrals went from four to one. Now, I don't know if this is a case of people are in a better position, now that they're coming out of COVID, they're making, you know, they're making more contacts, being more social, feeling more connected to their community. Or if it's an outlier, we'll just have to monitor and wait and see unfortunately. And before I wrap it up, I did wanna mention SMC Alert, it has had some problems, we're constantly working, constantly improving it. There is a barcode, or excuse me, QR code that will help you access, sign up for it. It's still the best way to get emergency information. With the possible exception of Genesis. If you haven't used this, I highly recommend taking a quick look. It actually allows you to look into Office of Emergency Services data in your region. You can actually map it out and see if there's anything near you. And finally, Transparency Portal, there is a QR code up there, I'll tell you right now that, not to be overly frank, when I went to the Transparency Portal, I was disappointed. I have spoken to our tech services, they are working on making it more robust, making it more current, making it more meaningful. So that's still in the works. As of right now, if you go to Transparency Portal, you can see some statistics, you can look at certain reports, arrests, so on so forth. We are working on making it, like I said, more robust, so you can get more in-depth information that's meaningful for you. And with that, are there any questions I can answer while I'm here?
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, we'll have some questions from staff. There's no public comments, so we'll just have some questions if there are any in comments.
Yeah, electric bikes.
Yes.
I don't know how much you've seen personally of what's going on, but in downtown Half Moon Bay, it's become pretty scary. I saw a young fellow with a child in a backpack go through two stop signs at what must have been at least twenty-five miles an hour without even turning his head to see what was happening on the, I don't know what we need to do about it, and I don't know how much the sheriff can do, but I do think that it is becoming an issue. And it's getting, it's getting worse and it's gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better because more and more people are buying electric bikes. Young kids using them, young families. So I don't know if you have anything to say about that.
Oh yes, I agree. In fact, I would go so far as to say that it's not becoming a problem, it is a problem. And Half Moon Bay unfortunately is not alone. So one of the things is we have reached out to our officers internally. We've expressed them, we've gone over training, we've gone over the applicable sections. One of the things that makes it, sorry, one of the things that makes it difficult is how mobile they are, number one. And number two, the fact that exactly like you said, it's, they don't seem to really recognize anything going on around them. One of the things I think is very possibly fruitful is that we've partnered with the schools, we are going to be doing a e-bike rodeo. So and the idea without, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but the plan that we're working on is to make it multifaceted, to talk to the parents, that these are not the e-bikes that are like little electric mopeds when we were kids. These have a lot, they go a lot faster, they're a lot more dangerous. Reaching out to the children, both educating them as to their responsibilities as a rider and doing skills. So that not only do they recognize their responsibilities to keep them and the people around them safe, but also, you know, give them the skills they need to avoid a collision, you know? I can tell you, I don't know if anybody here has taken the Motorcycle Safety Foundation class, but that's a huge, huge factor and it's saved my life a number of times over the years. Learning how to effectively brake, how to stop, how to keep a high visual horizon and see those hazards. So, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to drown on, I'm a little excited about it. But this is what we're doing about the e-bikes. And like I said, if people have ideas, I am more than, more than open to them.
Just quickly on the e-bike, I think our cities and I know the county B-PAC bicycle pedestrian advisory committees are also very interested in how to bring information to the parents, to the children, whether it's through schools, you're exactly right, it's a problem everywhere.
My sense is it's gonna be a problem until they're licensed. Once they're licensed, then they have to go through training to get a license.
I would agree. I mean honestly, I think that training is a good thing, like I said, if I had a nickel for every time either both car, driving a car and driving a motorcycle, that training has saved my life, I'd be buying a nice big house.
So I grew up with motorcycles in the beginning in Truckee and I know the safety of it, because I almost crashed a few times and ended up going road to dirt. And then now I'm into e-biking and e-biking is very similar to motorcycle riding. And so I think if we had some kind of training for kids, almost like motorcycle riding, but you're e-bike riding, because everything comes up faster on you and you have to look to the left and make sure and look to the right and you have to visually look ahead of you, is that person gonna come out in front of you? Because you can get hit real quick, but also obeyed by all the rules, the stop signs are there, the, you know, hit a bell, you're gonna pass somebody, because that's the other thing, I think Ruddick has brought that forward, that bringing that, you know, on the coastal trail, we need to have etiquette. And the other thing is we need to have, there's signs now, which I've gotta say, by the bridge, it says, slow, there is a blind curve, so things like that. Because the bikes are moving fast now and you don't know who's gonna be around that corner. So we should have training somewhat, and I think we have, the kids are doing that for, or that we have adopted now for training or parking wrecks and stuff like that. But I think that's something that we should incorporate and maybe even have the sheriffs incorporate. The other thing I wanted to bring up too was this proactive policing. For the, because the driving under the influence was up twenty-five percent, but you made that comment, proactive policing. I think during the holidays now, because Kristin's bringing that forward, we have four weeks coming up, I think we should be proactive on policing, on utilizing our signs. Drinking and driving is not allowed or whatever, you know, because we have those two signs. The other thing as I wanted to see is with the solar panels coming in for the sheriff's substation, are you gonna be able to keep your compound secured with the gates and parking and flow of the substation now that's gonna be taking place, what, in a couple of weeks?
That work, that work starts this week, we're working with the office to ensure they have what they need during that project.
Okay. And then we have the fireworks that continue on, have been, it's three e-bikes and one motorized bike. They all look like motor, they look like little Honda fifties if you would. We have it on video, I think I shared it with you. If there's any follow-up on that, if we could try to, you know, get more on that situation, because that just happened again this last weekend and people are getting pretty upset about it. And I know we talked privately about it, but I think the general public needs to know that we are doing something and trying to address that.
Oh yes, in that particular case, I prefer not to discuss individual cases, especially because the last thing we wanna do is see somebody targeted. But that case is being investigated, I have spoken with the detectives about it. Unfortunately, they were pulled away on another matter, but it is being currently investigated. We are looking at ways to try and address this. Like I've said before, the problem with putting a deputy on overtime, as you can see in the video, they're out of the frame and down the block before the first thing sparks. So it's very difficult. One of the suggestions was to try using drones, of course, especially given the heightened concerns right now. I'm not gonna do anything like that before everybody is comfortable with it as much as we can be. Because it doesn't matter what it's being used for, it matters how it affects people. So that is something that we're working on. Also, in another Half Moon Bay moment, after the last meeting, a gentleman, a citizen approached me. It turns out that he is a engineer and whereas the shot spotter may be prohibitive, both in terms of time and expense, he was saying, he goes, I may be able to whip up something just as a retirement hobby thing to help you track these down that would have much less if any expense and be able to communicate us, communicate to us more quickly, so we can try and do something about it. So and I'll be, I'll be meeting with him next week to further discuss that.
He visit by chance?
I can either confirm or deny. No, it's not.
That's really interesting. So the other thing I wanted to bring up was the, because we hear this all the time on Main Street, you know, nobody's writing tickets and Main Street, there's always violation, or there, nobody's writing tickets. But here, there's proof that there is a lot of parking tickets being written, so I'm seeing that, I just wanna point that out, because I'm hearing that a lot. And then you brought up the fact that the moving violations are down. But there again, what was the reasoning on that, just for new officers in training and was that the reason?
I'm saying, I suspect, I don't know. Unfortunately, two points is not a trend, but I can tell you that over the last year or so, we have had, we now have, I believe, three field training officers and we've, basically our program is full. As you well know, we have been hiring like mad. We have, I mean, I won't, don't like to go into numbers in open forums, but we have a lot of people going through the program and waiting on training. So those field training officers usually have a trainee with them and I have to imagine that affects the numbers.
We talked also, so I think it's good for everybody kinda know, is like if, I got subpoenaed for something I witnessed a year and a half ago and they came to the house at eleven o'clock on a Friday night and I called you about it and called Matthew about it. But we came up with a conclusion that anything after, like I said, quiet time to ten. And I liked your response, that it was common sense, but that was something that you guys had not trained on, so that was something, if you wanna elaborate on that. I thought it was a good, it was a good meeting that we had and it was something, here I am being a good citizen and I'm being, I felt like I was a criminal at eleven o'clock at night.
That was actually a very interesting conversation, because I looked it up, I found out who the deputy was and he was just off training. And actually, his field training officer was there. And he's like, oh yeah, he just came off of training and I explained the situation. And he said, no, he goes, we don't generally serve, and so, you know, arrest warrants can be served till ten o'clock unless they're endorsed for night service. There's no such rule on subpoenas. But we had a, but basically we had a quick conversation, I explained to him like, well, you can see how this would affect, people step up, they do the right thing or something bad has happened to them, either way, we should treat them with respect. And what, basically what he expressed was, he goes, yeah, we don't normally serve subpoenas after eight o'clock. He goes, yeah, even nine o'clock is too late, he goes, we generally don't serve after eight. Well, did you actually train him on that? He goes, ah, I actually never came up with him. So he, he brought it up at one of the training officers' meetings and I spoke to the sergeant and they're gonna include it in the training now on. So that while it's not, it's one of those things where it's not a legal requirement, but it's a human requirement.
Thank you and for listening and Matthew for listening and that we came up with a conclusion, I think is good for our community, it happened to me and I just, I thought, well, if it's gonna happen to me, it might happen to somebody else. And I wanna say the report's really well done and I like the executive summary, because you can read everything and then you can get the summary right here. And then I snapshot this, because if people ask questions and I can look at my photos and I can find that in my file and you've done a great job tonight on this presentation.
Oh, and I apologize, I have to apologize for that, because that was actually, the report that was published was actually a draft. The, we'll be publishing the final report, I'm guessing probably in the morning. So my apologies, so I wouldn't rely on the data in the report that was published earlier.
Okay, thanks again, Chief. And by the way, I just wanna observe, I really liked that one observation you meant, that DUI, DUI stops have increased. But you mentioned, it doesn't necessarily mean there's more people driving drunk. Frankly, on Friday and Saturday nights in Half Moon Bay, there's a fair number of places where people coming out with a few to drink. But the fact that a number of officers were being trained to actually spot more carefully possible drunk drivers, sounds great. You know, and you have statistics, could mean a number of things, so thank you for pointing that out. And I think that's it, so thank you very much, I'm gonna, no more questions, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a quick motion. I move that we accept the FY twenty twenty-four twenty-five annual report on law enforcement services and activities.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Thank you. And we're going to take a break, We are ready to resume. Okay. Resuming our meeting. Our next item up is Seahorse Ranch License Agreement. Are we going to have a brief staff report? Matthew, we're going to have a brief staff report?
Yeah, I can keep it fairly brief, assuming that council's already reviewed the staff report. Just by way of background, Seahorse Ranch is located on Highway 1, just south of the Frenchman's Creek subdivision. And for many, many years, they've offered beyond their onsite services, they've offered commercial horseback rides that move down the coastal trail. There's a horse trail that runs parallel to the bike and pedestrian trail. And then they access Poplar Beach to do beach rides. And it's actually one of only a few remaining commercial beach rides in the state of California. And it's a pretty big draw for the community. In 2020, we wrapped up what was a kind of a long period of discussion about the future of those rides and our permit with them. There were concerns that were expressed by the community. There was a lot of work that happened here with the council and with the community, and ultimately, we were able to land on an extension of their agreement that included some additional requirements for them. And that agreement expires at the end of this calendar year. And tonight, we just wanted to have a brief conversation about the future of the agreement and what we've learned over the last six years, and some requests, as we've met with Willa Chapman, who's here tonight from Seahorse Ranch. What I can say is, many of the complaints that we received as staff prior to renewing this agreement in 2020, and for a few months following that, as we're implementing some of the new requirements, and of course, we went into COVID, and a lot of things changed. We just don't get those complaints anymore. I think that we drafted an effective agreement, and I think we've developed a solid relationship with Ms. Chapman. And when issues arise, we're able to work them out pretty quickly. And I think we've had a really effective working relationship, which has resolved a lot of those issues. So in the staff report, we have a list of just the requested changes. We've also attached a copy of the current agreement, which expires at the end of this year, and a draft agreement that, following our discussion tonight, we would bring back, pending any revisions that you'd identify for a future approval. And the goal from Seahorse Ranch and the staff recommendation would be to extend this agreement for another five years. So just very quickly, a couple of the the major changes that have been requested. Where the horses access Poplar Beach, we call it the slot, and it's basically due west of Correa Street. If you, if Correa Street comes to an end at the railroad right of way, and you cross the open space there, that's where the horse trail ends. And then there's, it's one of the lower places that the bluff exists, and so you have a much shorter distance down to the beach from there. And it's it's kind of a transition from dirt to sand, and it's used by the horses. It's also, and not just Seahorse Ranch, but private horse riders as well. And pedestrians use it as well. And it's, it's a popular place to access if you're not coming from Poplar Street or the Poplar Street parking. As part of our previous agreement, there was concerns about erosion and the future state of that access point. And we were looking at doing work to improve the other vertical access point. And because this is a major user, we had agreed to an 80-30, or 80-20 split, where any work we decided to do and move forward on improving that access, Seahorse Ranch would actually pay 80% of that that cost. It turns out that after we made the improvements to the other vertical access, and as we've observed it over the last six years, we've not had to make any improvements to that access point. It's held up really, really well. It hasn't eroded further, and it continues to be a very popular place for people to access. We've also observed that there's, since the pandemic, there's an increased number of private riders bringing their horses to the beach. We see that in the parking lot at Poplar Beach. We see that through new events, like Baccaro Days, which we heard about tonight, and we know is becoming very popular. And in discussion with Seahorse Ranch, have proposed reducing that to a 50-50 split to recognize the additional use by other parties than Seahorse Ranch of that access point. At this point, we don't anticipate any future maintenance or major capital repairs there. But we do think it's important that if that were to happen, that there would be some shared responsibility here as well. The other, I would say, major change in in this proposal is a reduction in the cost. The fees for the previous extension were based on 5% of their gross revenues. For 10 years, I negotiated concession agreements on behalf of the county of San Mateo, both at their parks and at their airports. And 5% of gross revenues is a very typical concession fee. And rather than having to go through the complex calculations of receiving their receipts and auditing them every single month, we looked at their books, came up with an average cost, and based their fee on a 5% of gross receipts. And that's netted us, on average, about $15,000 of revenue per year from Seahorse Ranch. There's been a couple of things that have changed over the last six years. One is, they've actually had to modify the number of rides that they offer. One of the downsides that we've observed since the pandemic is, people like to bring their dogs to the beach. People don't like to have their dogs be on leashes at the beach. And of course, we have lots of signage, and we have park rules that say, you cannot have your dogs off-leash at the beach. That has been really, really challenging to enforce. The sheriff's office has tried a few things. They have the Polaris vehicle that allows them to make trips down to the beach, because the walk down and back takes, you know, you saw the numbers of how many deputies we have on staff each day. And to send deputies down to walk on the beach can take them out of commission for an hour plus at a time because of the distance it is to get to and from the vehicle. So the Polaris is really the most practical way to do those patrols. Unfortunately, the Polaris has been a very unreliable vehicle, and has spent more time in the shop and needing repairs than on the beach. And that has been extremely frustrating for Seahorse Ranch, who actually had a couple of really serious incidents between off-leash dogs and horses. And so, being focused on safety for the riders and for their horses, they have proactively reduced the number of beach rides, so that they're not out in the afternoons where they've observed more of that activity. I think it has reduced some of those bad interactions, but it's also limited their ability to gain revenue from this, from this business. And so, between that, and of course, the whole world has changed as far as insurance and costs to operate. They've requested a reduction to about 3% of gross revenues, which would result in about a $2,200 decrease in initial revenue for us in the first year. And then over, as it increases over the next several years, it'd be about that. You've seen the staff report. I'm happy to go over any other requested changes. And we have Ms. Chapman here to answer any questions you might have. Our goal tonight would be to get some feedback from you about some of these proposed changes, and the consensus about, should we be bringing back an agreement for review and approval at a future meeting? So with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah. Just, and before we start questions, just to piggyback on what you said, I just really want to compliment Willa Chapman for really running a very professional and well-run business. I remember six years ago, there were some issues, we talked about it. And as Matthew said, they were really all well-resolved, and it's just a great attraction to have on the coast. And I'm glad you're still here, running that business for us. So thank you. Really appreciate that. Okay. Questions from?
Thank you. First question, you said to reduce from 5% to 3%, then is it an increase, an escalator every year, or?
Yeah, there's a 3% on top of that increase each year, but it's 3% of that fee amount. So basically, the way we do it is, we look at the books over, I think we looked at a four or five-year period, including some of the income they had pre-pandemic. We determined, okay, here's where they're averaging right now in annual gross revenues. What is 3% of that? That's the base year fee, and then that goes up 3% per year. It's like a cost of living increase.
And then, so what you called a slot there at the end of Correa's, that's how I access the beach, too, because it is the easiest spot. And traditionally, I, the path, the horses go down the Poplar Beach itself, go down there, and then come up the slot. I don't think horses rarely, if any, ever see go down the slot. Maybe they do that, too.
Are you saying they go down the main vertical access at the end of Poplar?
At Poplar.
No, no, horses don't use that anymore. I think they used to, but that practice was.
So they're usually using everything up and down there at the slot. Perfect. Because I was wondering, what improvements would you do at the slot? I just couldn't imagine what would happen there, because it's just, it is what it is.
I think we've visualized that if we started to get severe erosion there, we'd have to do some things to protect the sides of the bluff there from collapsing in on it. And then maybe some stabilization, like we've done at the vertical, vertical access with some almost like tiered stairs. But it's just really held up really well. And it sounds like you use it, and you've seen that.
Yeah, no, it works. It works well. No, thank you.
Are we going to have public, public forum?
Yeah, clarifying questions?
It's okay.
Okay, yep, we do have some public comments. By the way, for people just joining, unfortunately, we don't have Zoom access this evening for those who are attending remotely, so we won't be able to take your public comments. But we'll start with comments here. I think it's appropriate, we start with Willa Chapman. And she will be followed by Joaquin Jimenez.
Assuming no technical difficulties, I'm going to get through this quickly. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Staff.
I'm sorry, can you actually talk right into the mic so we can hear you?
No. All right.
I don't know how to respond to that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm glad to be back. And thank you for your kind words. I brought with me, in case you are interested, some additional information, which shows the range of customers that we see annually. I have copies for you. We have a huge Silicon Valley presence that comes to see us. Many of them are doing off-site events, they're staying at the Ritz, they're coming to the ranch or going golfing. But we also have a ever-increasing number of international corporations that come to Northern California, see the Ritz, see the riding as a really unique experience for them. So I thought it would be of interest to take a look at, at this information. We do a huge number of youth groups, scouts. Alameda County has sent its summer program, its recreation program, kids to us every year. We have Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, 4-H groups, all kinds of inner-city nonprofit groups, tremendous number of young people who never literally had stood next to a horse until they came to Seahorse Ranch. And it's a lovely thing to see. And it's a lovely thing to see. Children who are frightened of these large animals and come back with huge smiles on their face, feeling very empowered that they were able to do something with an animal that frightened them before they got started. It's a very encouraging experience for many people. And on the braggadocio side, I have another bit of information for you. We were designated in the top 10% internationally of people in this industry. So worldwide, we're 10%, the top 10%, which is a big feather in our cap. I'm very pleased with. The challenge for us is that the overhead costs have become astronomical. It's not just that we've had to reduce the number of rides for safety's sake. And I have to tell you, I did that without hesitation. It's not worth the danger. But the cost of everything, grains, alfalfa. We do buy locally. Our oat hay is grown on local Half Moon Bay fields. But even with that, the cost has almost doubled since the pandemic, as has our liability insurance, our workers' comp insurance. I know I'm preaching to the choir. We all have to go and pay our bills, and we know how expensive things have become. So we ask for the reduction simply to acknowledge the challenges of our staying in business and providing the service to the community. So if anyone has a question, I'd be glad to answer.
Yep, thanks. Thanks, Willa. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joaquin Jimenez, followed by Nancy Fontana.
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, members of the public. Seahorse Ranch, it's a, it's, I've been part of the program Seahorse Ranch since I was in high school. Not only me, you know, several other students when I was in high school, we worked at Seahorse Ranch. We were wranglers. Later on, when I worked for the probation department, San Mateo County, juvenile probation, I had a program. You know, I remember coming to Willa and asking her about having, or you know, or youth, you know, come to Seahorse Ranch and learn about horses. And we did. Every Saturday, I would bring a group of five, no, five young men to clean, feed the horses, brush the horses, saddle the horses. And by noon, they had the opportunity to ride a horse. Many of them, most of them, you know, it was their first time, you know, to be on a horse or to be that close to a horse. It made a big impact. You know, every kid at juvenile hall, the juvenile camp, was looking forward to being part of this program. And that's what Seahorse is. As you know, Half Moon Bay, or heritage of the coast, we are an Equestrian community. The Equestrian community brings millions of dollars, you know, to the community. Yes, the other day, actually on Saturday, you know, during the pumpkin festival, while I walked in to the small-town suites, and there's a photograph of a young lady on a horse. And that says, you know, "Don't forget that this is a horse town." You know, and Seahorse Ranch brings a lot of revenue to the city. Check the numbers. You know, numbers don't lie. You can see, you know, that our community needs business like Seahorse Ranch. During the Vaquero Days, many people were asking, "Where can I ride a horse?" You came to the right place. Go to Seahorse Ranch. You can ride a horse at the beach, cross a creek. I believe, Councilmember Johnson, you had the opportunity to ride a horse. Now, how was that? Pretty fun, right? We do that all the time. And now, you know, with Seahorse Ranch, you know, we have a lot of people. You heard from Willa, you know, who comes to our community to ride horses at the beach. If you see, if you check, you know, on social media, Half Moon Bay has now become one of the destinations to visit. We have a beautiful community. The attraction of the horses has grown. Just recently, I was at the Grand National Rodeo at the Cow Palace. Well, we saw, you know, I saw hundreds of people, you know, there at the rodeo. Anywhere you go, you know, the Central Valley, you see the horse industry. Everybody was wearing boots and hats. Go to any business here in Half Moon Bay. A lot of your young generation, they're wearing boots and hats. No, they want to be near horses. You know, Seahorse Ranch, it's a landmark in California. Not only in the coast, not only the Bay Area, but actually in California. So I hope all of you get a chance to visit Seahorse Ranch and ride a horse, you know, pet a horse or brush a horse, maybe feed it. I don't know, give it a try. You might like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Next speaker, that's Nancy Fontana. And she'll be followed by Ellen Shireman.
Hi, thank you, Council and members of the public. And first, before I start, I want to make, clarify something to the Seahorse Ranch people that what I'm about to bring up is not a criticism of your operation at all. I know your business is under new management and that sort of thing. Just so you know, it's not, I'm not trying to criticize the current business. This is a really tough one for me. Thirty-three years ago, horses escaped Seahorse Ranch. Seven of them were loose on Highway 1. And the council members were related to this. There was a fatal accident. The police report stated that they expected both people in the front of the car, the passenger and the driver, to be killed. I guess you could consider my family lucky that only my mother was killed. My nephew survived. And I hate bringing this up because I think the business provides a really good recreational and educational opportunity for people and obviously economic help to the city. It was found to be, the police blamed rotting fence posts. And there was a criminal case. It was a big deal. I'm hoping, I don't know if the, I don't know if a license agreement is the appropriate place for a clause, but I'm hoping the council will consider a clause that guarantees that the fencing at Seahorse Ranch is inspected on a somewhat regular basis. I don't know what would be considered regular. And that Seahorse Ranch would actively inform their staff to check on things and inform the management if there are any problems, because Highway 1 is still there, and there's still a lot of cars traveling down Highway 1. And what was tragic about my mother's accident is that the horses had been out several times prior to this incident, and nothing was done. So I would really like a clause that includes something to guarantee that the fences are checked regularly. I think your insurance company would appreciate it if you have a clause like that, that shows that you're addressing a potential problem. It might, it might help you with your insurance too. And I'm sorry, I know I'm taking longer. I just want to read one thing. Because this is. I thank you for letting me take more time. The tragedy of the loss of Viola Schuch. I'm sure her family, friends, and community cannot be fully expressed. Viola led a full and meaningful life. She served her community for 15 years on the Granada Sanitary District Board, and at least seven years on the sewer authority mid-coast side, and never, never having missed a meeting until the night of her death. So she, my nephew was driving her to her meeting. And then there was a whole column in the review. So she was an activist, and she was very involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next speaker is Ellen Shireman, to be followed by Kristalyn Geet.
My name is Ellen Shireman. I'm the president of the Coastside Horse Council. And I appreciate being able to speak tonight to the council and the mayor and staff. I'm speaking in support of Seahorse Ranch, where I'm a private boarder and have my horse there. And the relationship between the private horse concession that goes down to the beach is very important also to us boarders. Both halves of the business complement each other and support each other. And as private boarders, we are very in favor of the trail-riding part of the business. As the president of the Horse Council, I am in, my purpose is to support and be a champion for horse sports on the coast side. Private boarding, coastal rides, and the ability of the public to be able to take part in these sports in a meaningful way. Being able to involve children on rides, leading to lessons, leading to perhaps leasing a horse or being able to have a horse in your life is quite an amazing thing. I started riding when I was quite old. I was, I was nine. And it was in Santa Fe, so I wasn't one of those kids that was in the saddle when I was four. It took me a little bit longer to learn how. But I'm 68 now, and I'm still riding. So this is a lifelong sport. It's a, it's a love affair with horses. And I'm very grateful to Willa for running Seahorse Ranch and making this available to so many people. It's been a joy seeing all the tourists come through. And I also want to say that as a boarder, we have a large economic impact. Owning a horse is a lot like owning a boat. You're going to spend somewhere between $8,000 and $20,000 a year on your horse. And that money flows directly into this community. And since I live in San Francisco, but do all my grocery shopping down here, I'm dropping a lot more money too, because I love this town and I want to see horses stay. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ellen. And our last speaker is Kristalyn Geet.
Thank you, Kristalyn, CEO of the Coastside Chamber and manager of Visit Half Moon Bay. And I am here to speak on behalf of the contract with Seahorse Ranch as they provide such an economic benefit to our area and are a vital partner as a part of Visit Half Moon Bay. When we get media and influencers who would like to come to our area and do activities that are out of the norm and they can't do them in most places, Willa is the one that we go to, because not a lot of places in California do allow horses on their beaches. So it is so unique that it catches fire online in the best possible way and brings us a lot of press that we would not get otherwise. Not to mention the beautiful programs that they help provide in allowing children and people who have never come to the beach or ridden horses before. And they do make accommodations for them, which is a really beautiful thing. So we do hope that you will approve their contract, and we thank you for working with them so wonderfully, city staff. They are vital to the Visit Half Moon Bay brand. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristalyn. That includes public comment. Public comment's now closed. And, sorry, open for council discussion. We've received a report and received from Matthew some of the suggested changes on the existing contract, which would be for another five years, right? Okay, so discussion?
Yeah, Willa, thank you for your presentation. In reading through the changes that you have suggested that we make to your contract, I have no problem with a five-year contract. I think you've done an incredibly good job these last five years in keeping your part of the bargain. I have a friend who boards with you, and she talks about how wonderful not just you are, but all of the people that work for you are. And what a wonderful place it is, and how warm and accepting. And she's getting older, and it's more difficult for her now to ride. But she always feels supported there. It's really great. So I, in my heart, feel, I don't ride horses, but I feel a lot of empathy with you. My one problem with the suggested changes is that because there have been fewer complaints about horse manure, that you would like to change the schedule up so that it's more, it works better with your workers to, and the horse riders, to do it at certain times. I have no issue with the change. But I do have an issue with that change if it lasted for five years. And my reason is, if it doesn't work, if there is more, more, are there more issues with manure on the trails and on the, on the beach? Then I don't want to have to wait five years to have the problem solved. So I would like to have, in the contract, something about a check in one year's time to see how that particular change has worked. That's all. That's my only thought.
I have no problem with that at all. We don't want complaints. We don't want manure.
No, I'm sure you don't.
So that's fine.
Thanks. Any other?
Nancy and Willa, I'm going to address both of you. It's all positive on, you know, most of it here. And Nancy, I want to say thank you for bringing that forward tonight. I didn't know about this. I think I remember it from back in the day. And I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. I would like to make sure that, and Willa, I would like to see if you're willing, just to make sure that, like, we have a building inspector or somebody that connects. You just look at the fences and look at them, make sure that once a year that they are adequate as best they can, so we don't have an accident like this. So mitigative measure to ensure that we don't have an accident of this type. And I know it's been seven years or so when it happened, or.
Thirty-three years.
Or 33 years ago, I'm sorry. But just to make sure that it's fine. And if you say it's been addressed, then I would be okay with it if it's been that long. I experienced, when I went there, because I grew up riding horses, as I told you down, we went, the whole family would go down the Santa Clara area, and we'd, we'd ride horses, went down Grand Canyon on horses. We did all kinds of stuff like this when I was a kid. So when I experienced going, Matthew said that this was coming up, so he wanted me to reach out to you, and we did, I did, I reached out to you. And I decided to not just go to your facility and talk to you. I decided, why don't I rent a horse? And you set me up with this big horse that was one of your worker's horse. What was the name of that horse? It was, it was like a.
Galaxy.
Galaxy, that's right. It was like a star in China, and it had photos and everything. It was like this beautiful horse. And the training that you got there was excellent. The gentleman who owned the horse and his son came out. And I became familiar with the horse right away. And the training that I saw that you were doing with the people that obviously haven't ridden horses was exceptional. The gated area and going with this fencing, because my mind's wandering a little bit. I remember walking in, and you weren't allowed to go in the gate. It says, "Don't open this gate." So I remember going off to the side. So I remember, I had this feeling of like you're trying to compound it for security. And I get it now with all the things that's going on. and I get it now with all the things that's going on. The, the experience that I got, especially with that, you know, going through underneath the bridge there, and you called it the "Amazon Experience," is exactly what I felt it was. It was this really cool experience, almost like what we're seeing on the screens. You guys don't see it, but there's greenery, there's water, the slot going down to the beach, the photographer up on the top with the, with the radios, radioing down to say that there was dogs on the beach, to, to make sure that they put the dogs on leash. There was constant communication. There was a gentleman in the back who was picking up the manure that was being dropped off in our whole thing, that the line was tight, it was safe. It was a pleasant experience. And then afterwards, coming back, looping in, then the photography part of it, and you getting to know people, and you're meeting the people that are going to ride, and you're meeting the people that you rode with, and they're getting their, their pictures. I decided to ask questions. You know, where are you from, and what part? A lot of people from the valleys, a lot of people, everybody that you were listing here, you know, they were all about, and they, they were coming here just to ride the horses, which Kristal and I had a discussion about, to make sure that we put this in our, you know, to try to draw people to this town for, because of that reason. So I think this is a positive thing, as long as we do it safe. And Nancy, that's why I'm bringing that up. I want to make sure that, you know, we are safe, and if everybody feels it's safe. What I experienced was a wonderful experience. The, I mean, the cost, you know, I paid market rate for it. It was, it was worth every penny. I saw the, our, our town, our bluff tops in a different way than nobody could ever, you know, if you don't know it, if you rode your bike on it, yeah, I remember back in the day, I used to do it. But riding the horse, it was a pleasant experience. It really was. And I saw the organization. I did have phone calls from people, not after the ride, but just people not knowing that I rode, pointing out that there was horse manure on the bridge off Poplar, the one on the very left side, which you guys don't even ride. That was something that somebody complained about that they kept seeing. But that goes to the fact, what Joaquin was saying, there's other people coming to the coast. So I don't want your facility and your business to be blamed for that. But we have to have to figure out a way to make sure that if people are riding outside of where Seahorse is riding, they're not getting blamed for it. But we have to kind of try to manage that, because the people don't like manure, and that's what she said. "Where can I go? You're going on this bridge. You got to go to the left, or to the right, there's a big plop right there." So we have to try to maintain that. So I don't know, there's answers to that. I'm in favor of this. I thought it's going to be great for the community, and it's, it has been for years. It was a, if, if I experienced a wonderful experience, I'd be so happy that other people from out of town are going to come here to experience that, because that's what's, that's what Half Moon Bay is about. It's unique, and it's a very cool experience.
I would like to respond to, first of all, Nancy. When I first came to Half Moon Bay and to Seahorse Ranch, this happened, and it was mortifying. So my heart goes out to you. I, I understand, and I appreciate that, and my sympathies to you. Much has changed in those 33 years. We check our fence lines big time. They're checked regularly, not just by us, but we have general liability insurance and property insurance, and those inspections happen annually. They will not re-up our insurance without us having the requisite safety in our fencing and, and other things. So that's part of running a good business, and we do that. The camaraderie that happens, that you spoke about when you ride, is something that you can only experience when you take a horse out. And the whales are running now. And being on horseback, on the bluff, watching the whales and the dolphin is unlike anything. I mean, it's just special. And then a trip through the rainforest, all of that is quite wonderful. And thank you for your kind words. I just can't emphasize enough that my main focus is safety. It's safety for my horses. It's safety for the community. I am well aware of how close Highway One is. So we check regularly. Okay?
Anything else I can answer?
I feel comfortable that what's being proposed is, is sufficient to support what I think is a, a great local business. And I really appreciate the steps you've taken in the last few years to address previous concerns. It seems like it's a well-run operation, and I feel confident that what you're saying and what you're committing to is absolutely right on. So, thank you for that.
Great. I agree with everything that's been said. And do you need any more direction?
No, this is great. I think we'll, we'll meet again and finalize some of this language based on the feedback we've gotten tonight, and bring that back probably on November 4th for you to?
Can we address the checking on the manure situation on an annual basis somehow? And it, I know you'll do it, but I'd like to have it in the agreement somehow.
Yeah, yeah, we'll incorporate some language in the agreement.
That's good, great.
Good. Okay, I think we're done then. Thank you. Thank you for coming here tonight. We'll move on to our last item of the evening, item 10C, regarding the memorandum of understanding to participate in the multi-jurisdictional inclusionary housing study.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. If you are comfortable with the materials that you've read, I'm happy to skip the presentation and just read the staff recommendation and take any questions you have. Okay. Staff recommends that you adopt a resolution to one, oh, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding and any documents required in a form approved by the city attorney for a multi-jurisdictional grand nexus and feasibility study. And two, appropriating an amount not to exceed $59,314 from the Affordable Housing Fund to fund the project.
I think it looks like a good idea. I'm happy to support it. I'm happy to make a motion in support of it.
Any clarifying questions or comments from the rest of the Council? Okay, we'll make a motion.
Move per staff? Second?
We'll take a roll call, since we're spending money.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangas?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm moving on to commission committee updates.
I just, we have a recreation commission meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the library, and it'll also be available on Zoom, as long as Zoom is functioning. And we'll be mostly talking about Carter Park and the events we've had, and kind of looking forward with the commission. So, if people are interested in that, hopefully they can tune in or come and participate.
Great. Thanks for the announcement on that, and any future discussion items?
I'd like to bring up something if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, before I was thinking about running, or right during I was running, I had a meeting with Ray Mueller, and he was just trying to get a sense of what I was all about, asking me a bunch of personal questions and trying to figure out who I was. And one of the things I asked him was, is there medical coverage of being a council member, or, you know, in that, because I, my future is changing, and I was looking at, you know, you know, I don't know where I'm going to be doing for work, or for my medical, for me or my family. And he actually said something. He just said, "Well, some of the, some of the councils actually do that. Some of the cities actually provide medical." And then what happened was, I was at my Elks Club, and I was, I ran into a building inspector who works for San Francisco, and he, we were kind of shooting the shit about my solar panels and all this stuff. And, and then I asked him, is there medical coverage up in San Francisco? And he said, "Yeah, the commissioners get medical coverage and stuff like this." So then I reached out to Jim Reams, who works up there also, and then he sends me back this email, I guess it was an AI thing. But I was wondering if that's something, I'm not asking the city, and I'm doing this for future council members and myself, I'm thinking, but I don't, I don't want it to sound like it's just me, because I have medical coverage, but down the road, I may not. And I'm also saying this in a way that I'm not saying I want more, I'm saying I'd want less. Like, I would give up my stipend for the medical coverage, or something proactive. So what I got from Jim was something that was kind of interesting, because he pretty much AI'd it, and says, "Under California Government Code 3651-6D, general laws, cities may provide health and welfare benefits to city council members if those benefits are also available to city employees. These benefits are not subject to the salary cap imposed in 3651-6A." So there's a lot of cities that actually provide it. There's a lot of details in here. I sent it to Matthew, Oceanside, Richmond, Roseville, Santa Ana, Ventura. They're not all around local here, but I was wondering if that's something we can maybe think about at some point, and if you guys say no, and we're not interested. But I'm not asking, and I'm not pursuing something to gain more or drain the city from any assets. I'm just asking for, is that a possibility?
I would second putting it on an agenda, future agenda for discussion.
Okay, that's it. And let's see, any city council reports? None. Great. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is returned. Good evening.